We have returned. And we are now sitting as the county council again today is October 21st, 2025. We will now move to second reading introduction of bills. Yep, they told me they were ready. Second reading of bills introduction. CB-80, An Act Concerning Nuisances for the Purpose of Clarifying the Legislative Intent of the County Public Neighborhood Nuisance Law, Adding a Council to Request a Certain Investigation Within a Certain Time Period Providing for the Prohibition by Promoters for the Operation of Public or Neighborhood Nuisances Providing for Certain Notices by the Nuisance Abatement Board for the Purpose of Providing Certain Attachment of Outstanding Fines to Real Property Tax Bill Providing for the Timing and Certain Written Decision Detailing the Board's Final Order or Action Increasing Fine Amounts and Providing for Certain Criminal Civil Penalties and Generally Regarding Public and Neighborhood Nuisances. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Harrison. I'll turn to Councilmember Olson for a TIEE report.
Sorry, which?
This is CB-80. We switched.
Eighty, okay.
At the request of the sponsor.
Okay, well, one second. I have it right here. Hold on. I know, I got a lot of committee reports here.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, I got it here. Uh, thank you.
I'm co-proposer on this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Why is your name not on it?
We combined seventy-nine and eighty.
Okay, so we can have Mr. D'Noga listed as a co-proposer.
I asked to be one as well.
And can you add Councilmember Watson?
Thank you.
Uh, Fisher and Adam Stafford, all as co-proposers, co-sponsors.
This is, I'm sorry.
Are you all co-proposers or co-sponsors?
No, I asked to be a co-proposer a long time ago with Mr. Harrison's office.
Oh, okay.
I sure did.
So Councilmember Watson's a co-proposer, Councilmember D'Noga's a co-proposer, Councilmember And then we'll add acts for sponsors.
Okay.
So, Councilmember proposal.
All right. Can I give my committee report? Thank you, Mr. Chair. The TIEE Committee convened on October 9th, 2025 to discuss CB-80, 2025, which amends subtitle fourteen, Division fourteen, nuisances by adding a new prohibition on activities by promoters for the operation of a public or neighborhood nuisance, increasing the amounts for certain criminal and civil penalties, providing a certain notice by the Nuisance Abatement Board, and for the timing of a certain written decision detailing the Board's final order or action. Councilmember D'Noga proposed an amendment. After discussion, the committee voted favorably on CB-80, 2025, as amended by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors, councilmembers Olson, Adam Stafford, Orietta, Fisher. Whichever you like, sir, proposer or sponsor. You have my call, sir.
Keep the vice chair happy and propose.
It stands introduced. CB-97, An Act Concerning Animal Control for the Purpose of Revising and Adding Certain Definitions, Increasing Certain Civil Penalties, Expanding the Leash Law, Expanding the Type of Dangerous Dog Animals, Providing for a Certain Provocation, Lifting a Certain Ban, Providing for Certain Pet Parenting or Handling Courses, Providing for a Pilot Program to Foster and Adopt Certain Specific Dog Breed, Providing for Certain Fines and Generally Regarding Animal Control in the County. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Burrows. I'll now turn to Councilmember Olson for a TIEE report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The TIEE Committee convened on October 14th, 2025, to discuss CB-97, 2025, which amends subtitle three, Division one, Division four, and Division six. And there were amendments and the, after discussion, the committee voted no recommendation on CB-97, 2025, as amended by a vote of three, zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And can you please add Councilmember Hawkins as a co-proposer? Uh, Councilmember Harrison as a co-proposer? Tom? Tom, would you like to be a co-proposer? Okay, okay, got it. So if you could add Councilmember Hawkins and Councilmember Harrison as co-proposers. Ms. Canning, can you discuss Amendment one to include this latest one from Councilmember D'Noga?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you so much. And Madam Vice Chair and Councilmembers, CB-97, 2025, Draft Two, has nine amendments. Amendment number one makes changes to the Purpose Paragraph and Function Paragraph. Amendment number two combines two definitions of dangerous animals into one. Amendment number three defines service animal and requires some of the pit bull terriers in the pilot program to be service animals. Amendment number four provides for a grandfather clause to lift the pit bull terrier ban and related associated conditions, provisions, and exceptions on dogs existing prior to the effective date of the act. Amendment number five provides that the pilot program for pit bull terriers owned, kept, or harbored is applicable to those pit bull terriers in existence after the effective date of the act. Provides, Amendment number six provides a timeframe for permitting and agreements and requires a six-month timeframe for registration. Amendment number seven increases fines for failing to obtain a pit bull terrier permit and for violating the conditions of the permit. Amendment number eight clarifies that all persons owning, keeping, or harboring a pit bull terrier shall obtain a special permit and shall pay an annual fee of twenty-five dollars. Amendment number nine substitutes the term "animal control" with "the administrator." And there is another amendment, Amendment number ten, which states that it provides for a certain spay and neuter requirement and with the exemption of spay and neuter for exhibition animals. And that concludes the summary of the amendments.
Thank you. On the amendments, Councilmember Harrison?
I guess, Mr. D'Noga, you offered these amendments?
No, he just had the last one around spay and neuter.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out for the six month. Just for the six-month registration, is that long enough?
Ms. Canning?
That there should be a timeframe because forty-five days would be the effective date. I think Ms. Canning and I set it on four, six months because it was a round number. It's whatever the administration or the body thinks. How long does it, should it be that people who currently own these animals have to get, in accordance with the law, get registered? So it's a policy decision. And the council can decide to do with the exact, but we need to pick, we need to pick a number.
Should, Mr. D'Noga, should it say up to, like where we set kind of a barometer that it can't go past this time, rather than just saying it's six months?
Well, I think if it's six months, it's up to six months, but you can.
Oh, I was thinking up to.
It says within six months of enactment.
I would be more comfortable, and you know, I don't have the professional expertise, so it's just an idea to float more leeway and time for the citizens of this county to get these dogs registered. Should be up to a year from the date that the bill is passed. I'm not trying to make it rocket science here.
I was, I'll go with the will of the body, but my view is we're lifting a ban that's very controversial and some people don't want to lift it at all. So if you're going to lift it, make sure that people get registered in an appropriate period of time. I kind of, I personally like six months because that's, it gives you plenty of time, but if the council wants to do a year, then do, you know, whatever you guys want to do.
I would say let's, let's just keep it at six months.
Okay.
On the amendment?
On the amendment?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Mr. D'Noga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta. Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors are councilmembers Watson. Thank you.
Saying no other councilmember, I'm going to, this stands introduce.
That's the draft three, sir.
Draft three, yes. CB-5, 2025, An Act Concerning Minimum Wage Indexing for the Purpose of Indexing Prince George County Minimum Wage to Consumer Price Index and Addressing the Adverse Impacts on Direct Support Professionals. Sponsor D'Noga, Orietta, Ivy. I'll turn to Councilmember Watson for a committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prince George County Council's Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee convened on February 27th, 2025, and also on March 13th, 2025, to consider CB-5, 2025, an act concerning minimum wage indexing. The GOFP Committee Director summarized the purpose of the legislation, which would index the Prince George County Minimum Wage to the Consumer Price Index and address the adverse impact felt by direct support professionals by keeping pace with minimum wage increases. The Director of Finance will be responsible for setting the rate beginning March 1st, 2026, based on the immediately preceding twelve-month period for which data is available on March 1st of each year. For every percentage increase in the minimum wage rate, the amount will be reduced by the amount of the percentage increase in the state direct support professionals reimbursement rate for the fiscal year. If the county general fund revenues for the fiscal year are projected to increase less than the Consumer Price Index, then the county council may reduce the increase in the minimum wage determined under subsection G by up to two percent. After discussion, the Government Operations Committee voted CB-5, 2025, favorably, five, zero. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to move Amendment one?
Move Amendment one.
It's been moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Olson. Madam Vice Chair, are you going to go through the, just call the roll?
Your choice. I'm prepared to very quickly tell you what they are if you would.
Okay.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. There are two changes, well, two blocks of changes in the bill. One is very technical. It's all on page two. There are four references on page two in lines five and sixteen and seventeen, respectively, that refer to the word "March." They need to be stricken and instead refer to the word "September." So that is that change. And that's pre-slight. On page three, however, we have prior to the beginning, and this is on page three, sixteen of your virtual binder, if you have it up. On page three of the bill, in lines twenty-two through twenty-five, that's the last subsection prior to the beginning of section two of the bill, we're going to strike that wholesale and instead rework it, and it's going to say something like this. Okay, it will say, notwithstanding paragraph one, if the county council is concerned about the spending affordability committee report and impacts on the county general fund, the county council may take any of the following actions. A, reduce the increase in the minimum wage determined under subsection G above, which of course is in your bill, by up to two percent, or B, and/or B, reduce or freeze the increase of total direct support professional wage supplement. And that is the sum total of the amendments to page two and three.
Thank you. It was moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Olson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Mr. D'Noga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher. I'm sorry.
She said aye.
She said aye, okay. Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Thank you. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors, councilmembers Watson, Olson, and Hawkins. Thank you.
This stands introduce. CB-19, An Act Concerning Speed Humps and Speed Monitoring Systems for the Purpose of Providing for the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, Providing for Traffic Studies to Evaluate the Installation of Speed Humps on Residential Streets, Providing for Certain Requests, Providing for Timeline Process of Conducting Traffic Study Making Determination on Whether to Install Speed Humps, Providing for the Appropriate Approvals for Speed Humps, Providing for Reporting Timeline for Final Decision on the Installation of Speed Monitoring Systems, Providing for a Report Timeline and for Final Decision on Installation of Residential District Speed Monitoring Systems, and Generally Regarding Speed Humps, Speed Monitoring Systems. This has been sponsored by Burrows and Orietta. I'll turn to Councilmember Olson for a TIEE report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The TIEE Committee convened on September 11th, 2025, to discuss CB-19, which codifies the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program as administered by the county DPWT. This legislation amends subtitle twenty-six, Division two, by adding new section twenty-six, one oh eight, oh two, entitled "Speed Humps." After discussion, the committee voted favorably on CB-19, 2025, by a vote of three, zero. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion, is there an amendment for this? If we can go with the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. There's amendment number one. CB-19, 2025, Draft One, Amendment number one makes changes to the Purpose Paragraph. Amendment number two makes technical changes to the bill. Amendment number three changes the term "speed humps" to "traffic calming devices." Amendment number four provides for a request of a county council member or an associated council member's request on behalf of an HOA to initiate a traffic calming device study. Amendment number five requires an individual and engineering study for approval for locating a traffic calming device. Amendment number six provides for the installation of traffic calming devices that require a favorable vote by a majority of those present by affected parties. Amendment number seven strikes the resolution requirement and requires quarterly reports of requests and disposition of requests for traffic calming devices. Amendment number eight provides that the DPWT director shall consult with the police department regarding whether DPWT will install speed monitoring systems on a particular roadway and at an estimated time for installation. And that is the summary of the amendments for CB-19.
Thank you. I'd like to move Amendment one.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Mr. D'Noga.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta. Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Second reading of bills, CB-23, An Act Concerning Wildlife Animal Control for the Purpose of Creating a Study and Fee for Protecting Wildlife, General Health, Safety and Welfare of Citizens Impacted by Wildlife Within the County, and Creation of a Joint Action Plan to Limit, Control, and Protect Wildlife Within the County. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Orietta. I'll turn to Councilmember Olson for a report.
Three, thank you, Mr. Chair. The TIEE Committee convened on October 14th, 2025, to discuss CB-23, which amends subtitle three, Division two, requiring the National Capitol Park and Planning Commission to Create a Study on the Effects of Wildlife Displacement by the Development of New Land. Planning Department provided comments, expressing concerns. And in response to the concerns, the sponsor offered amendments and proposed draft two. After discussion, the committee voted favorably on CB-23, 2025, as amended by a vote of three, zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsor, Councilmember Watson. Thank you.
This stands introduce. CB-36, 2025, An Act Concerning Amending the Number of Individuals Required to File. Actually, let's move to CB-48. An Act Concerning Deceptive Trade Practices by Landlords for the Purpose of Enhancing Tenant Protections Under Consumer Protection Laws in Response to the Widespread Issues Facing Tenants, Prem Landlords, Unfair or Deceptive Practices. This has been sponsored by our Councilmember Burrows. I'll turn to Council, to Rana Hightower.
Yes, the PHED Committee convened on June 16th and October 16th to discuss CB-48, 2025. Ms. Millaway with the Budget and Policy Analysis Division discussed the purpose of the bill, highlighting that Montgomery County allows tenants to deduct up to one month's rent for repair costs if violations are issued to landlords. Chair Burrows, the bill sponsor, mentioned adding the language within the Montgomery County Code to the Prince George County Code would be helpful. Chair Burrows also raised the question regarding the lack of penalties written within the legislation. Mr. Maddox stated that the county had a consumer protection division in the 1990s, but it had moved to the Maryland Attorney General's Office, who is responsible for enforcement. Ms. Owen stated that while DPA can enforce immunity compliance in leases, it cannot enforce regulations for home purchases. The PHED Committee voted three, zero, in favor of CB-48, 2025.
Thank you. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsor, councilmembers Watson, Olson, Hawkins, D'Noga, Adam Stafford, I'm sorry, and Orietta. My apologies.
All right. This stands introduce. I'll just go back to CB-36, 2025, An Act Concerning Amending the Number of Individuals Required to File Financial Disclosure Statements for the Purpose of Providing the Number of Individuals Required to File Financial Disclosure Statements Pursuant to Section two dash two nine four, the Prince George County Code to Include Integrity and Compliance Officer and the Deputy Integrity and Compliance Officer. The sponsor is not here, so will another person? Does anyone seek to sponsor this? Okay, Councilmember Olson will. And I'll turn to Councilmember Watson for a report. This is thirty-six.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prince George County Council Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee convened on May 12th, 2025, to consider CB-36, 2025, an act concerning amending the number of individuals required to file financial disclosure statements. Council staff provided an overview of the legislation revising the number of individuals required to file financial disclosure statements pursuant to Section two dash two ninety-four of the Prince George County Code to include the Integrity and Compliance Officer and the Deputy Integrity and Compliance Officer. This is a procedural modification that will not have a fiscal impact. After further discussion, the Prince George County Council Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee voted five, zero, in favor of the bill. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors, Councilmember Watson and Hawkins, excuse me. Thank you. And Mr. Olson was the proposer.
Hawkins, Watson.
Yes, sir.
This stands introduce. CB-52, Concerning, An Act Concerning Revised Project Labor Agreement for the Purpose of Revising the Pilot Project Labor Agreement Targeting Prince George County Department of Public Works and Transportation, CIP, four dot six six dot zero 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 two, curb and road rehabilitation to construction projects by authorizing the Department to Grant Project Labor Agreement Requirement Waivers under Certain Conditions. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Burrows. I'll turn to Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The TIEE Committee convened on October 14th, 2025, to discuss CB-52, 2025, which amends subtitle ten A, Division six, subdivision thirteen, specifically CB-52 amends section ten A, one fifty-eight, zero 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 three, regarding PLAs for the Department of Public Works and Transportation's curb and road rehabilitation to projects. In February 2023, CB-4, the project labor agreement was signed into law. This bill introduced a pilot project labor agreement program to the Department of Public Works and Transportation. And the county office of law offered a technical amendment to provide the DPWT director with waiver authority established in the bill. After discussion, the committee voted favorably on CB-52, 2025, as amended by a vote of three, zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any additional sponsors?
No additional sponsors.
Saying none, this bill is introduced.
Okay.
As a sponsor, this bill is introduced again. Second reading of bills introduction, CB-61, An Act Concerning Police Vehicle Pursuits Conduct and Reporting Zoe's Law, the Purpose of Requiring Annual Reporting on Vehicle Pursuit Data, Modifying Mutual Aid Agreements Between the Prince George County Police Department and the Local Municipalities to Ensure a Uniform Vehicle Pursuit Policy Within the County. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Orietta. I'll turn to Ms. Uvans.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The Health, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee met on October 16th, 2025, to consider CB-61, 2025. Staff provided an overview of the bill, also known as Zoe's Law, which focuses on how police officers in Prince George County conduct vehicle pursuits. Eric Irvin, Legislative Attorney, summarized the key amendments in draft two. He noted that the new draft removes sections that previously altered internal police pursuits policies, focusing instead on reporting requirements and coordination between jurisdictions. The updated version also requires that all local police departments in the county meet at least the same pursuit standards as the Prince George County Police Department. To support this, the bill directs the county executive to update mutual aid agreements with municipalities so that each reflects these minimum pursuit standards within six months of the bill's effective date. Bill sponsor, Council Vice Chair Orietta, explained that after discussions with the police chief, police union, and county administration, draft two was introduced as a compromise aligning with existing county police policies while ensuring local departments meet at least the same pursuit standards. The council liaison, officer of the county executive, presented proposed amendments, and also suggested pending legal review that the legislation apply prospectively rather than retroactively. After discussion, the Health, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee voted five, zero, in favor of CB-61, 2025, draft two, as amended.
Okay. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors, councilmembers Watson, Adam Stafford, Olson. Thank you.
CB-62, An Act Concerning Administrative Hearings for the Purpose of Clarifying Ambiguity With Respect to Requirements for Seeking Judicial Review and Alignment, Aligning the Appellate Rights for Administrative Citations with Those That Are Available for Civil Citations. Ms. Hightower, thirty seconds.
Yes.
And from now on, thirty seconds for everyone because we are coming up against a quorum issue.
PHED met on July 3rd and September 4th and October 4th to consider CB-62. The acting chair, excuse me, the acting county executive transmitted a letter requesting favorable consideration. After discussions with county council legal staff and Chair D'Noga, a draft two was proposed, and the PHED Committee voted five, zero, in favor of CB-62, 2025.
And, uh, the PHED committee voted five zero in favor of CB sixty-two, twenty twenty-five, draft two.
Thank you. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsor, Councilmember, uh, Dernoga, Watson.
This stands introduced. CB sixty-eight, an act concerning code of ethics for the purpose of amending the Prince George's County Code of Ethics to prohibit a former council member of Prince George's County from assisting or representing another party for compensation in a matter that is subject to legislative action from Prince George's County for three calendar years from the date they officially leave the office, prohibiting a former council member from being compensated in representation in certain matters in which they participated as a council member, generally related to the Prince George's County Code of Ethics. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Fisher. Someone else will have to take it up in her absence.
I'll take it.
You'll take it. Um, and will you all, you also have a report?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The Prince George's County Council's Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee convened on October ninth, twenty twenty-five to consider CB sixty-eight, twenty twenty-five, an act concerning code of ethics for the purpose of amending the Prince George's County Code of Ethics to prohibit former council members of Prince George's County from assisting or representing another party for compensation in a matter that is a subject of legislative action from the Prince George's County Government for three calendar years from the date the official leaves county office, prohibiting a former council member's compensation representation in certain matters in which they participated as a council member, and generally relating to the Prince George's County Code of Ethics. Council staff reviewed a revised draft that the committee considered during the meeting. After a motion from Councilmember, Council Vice Chair Orietta and a second from Committee Vice Chair Member Bougay, the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee voted favorably on CB sixty-eight, twenty twenty-five, as amended, five zero. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And this is operating on draft two. Are there any additional sponsors? Saying none, this stands introduced. Second reading of bill, CB seventy, an act concerning subcontract requirements for businesses that do not qualify as county-based small business or county-based minority business enterprise, for the purpose of mandating that in order for any contract to be given a business, to be given to a business that does not qualify as a county-based business or a county-based minority business enterprise, that business shall have a subcontract with the county-based business for a minimum of fifteen percent of the total value of the contract. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Orietta. I'll turn to Ms. Watson, Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee convened on October ninth, twenty twenty-five to consider CB seventy, twenty twenty-five, an act concerning subcontractor requirements for businesses that do not qualify as a county-based small business or a county-based minority business enterprise. During the meeting, council staff provided an overview of the legislation, which would create a mandate that in order for any contract to be given to a business that does not qualify as a county-based small business or county-based minority business enterprise, that business shall have a subcontract with the county-based small business for a minimum value of fifteen percent of the total contract value. Council Vice Chair Orietta explained that the legislation is designed to intentionally develop businesses already in the county. This bill, as amended, would create a floor at fifteen percent for county-based MBEs under the current fifty percent. After a motion from Committee Vice Chair Bougay and a second from Council Vice Chair Orietta, the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy voted favorably five zero. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors, Councilmembers Adam Stafford, Watson. Thank you. Oh, and Hawkins.
Excuse me, can I inquire, is there a draft two? I don't think I've seen it.
Yes, there is a draft two that represents, that reflects the amendments we made in committee. And, um, Director Nutt, Ned Daniel Tuck, can you please make sure the county executive team has it? Thank you.
I think I have to have draft two right now.
Right. Is that in, is that in the binder?
Is it?
You don't have a copy of the draft from committee?
Let's come back to that and let's get draft two together. CB seventy-one, an act concerning vehicles and traffic, bike lanes and bikeways for the purpose of providing certain definitions, providing for prohibiting motorized vehicles on bike lanes and bikeways with certain exceptions and generally regarding the prohibition with the exceptions of motor vehicles on bike lanes and bikeways. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Olson. I'll turn to Councilmember Olson for a brief committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, TIEE committee convened on October ninth, twenty twenty-five to discuss CB seventy-one, twenty twenty-five, which amends subtitle twenty-six, division twelve, to prohibit motorized vehicles from operating in bike lanes and bikeways with specific exceptions. The sponsor offered proposed draft two, uh, which reorganizes the bill. Um, the county executive and Department of Public Works and Transportation expressed support for the bill as amended. Uh, Office of Law indicated the bill is in proper form. After discussion, the committee voted favorably on CB seventy-one as amended by vote of five zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors, Councilmembers Watson, Orietta, Dernoga, Adam Stafford, Hawkins. Thank you. And Ms. Oh.
This stands introduced.
And to clarify on CB seventy, the draft two was provided to councilmembers electronically at three fifty-four by me. I just didn't realize it a minute ago. So you do have it for your consideration today.
Okay. Uh, can we also give it to the county executives?
Absolutely.
CB seventy-three, an act concerning Public Transit Access Authorization Act of twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of establishing a formal process for public transportation agencies to request and obtain a private residential or commercial property for the purpose of installing or operating bus stops within Prince George's County, providing for certain definitions, providing for the application and review process, providing for certain property owner consent and public transit provider approval, providing for certain shuttle service efforts under certain circumstances, and providing for approval, providing for property owner rights protections, and providing for implementation and regulations and generally regarding public transit access authorization. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Orietta. I'll turn to Councilmember Olson for a committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is CB seventy-three, seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Right, yeah, okay. Thank you. Um, the TIEE committee convened on October, October ninth, twenty twenty-five to discuss CB seventy-three, twenty twenty-five, which amends subtitle twenty A, uh, to establish a process to allow public transit providers to locate bus stops on private property. Based on discussions with DPWT, the sponsor proposed, uh, the following amendments. Locating bus stops on private property requires the collaborative effort of the county, the property owner, and the public transit provider to obtain the property owner's consent, uh, the acknowledgement of applicable state law, and the ultimate authority of WAMADA through the multi-jurisdictional, uh, compact, and providing the council uh, with the option to mandate the provision of shuttle service by the property owner to the nearest metro station as an alternative to the location of a bus stop. After discussion, the committee voted favorably on CB seventy-three, twenty twenty-five, as amended by vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsor, Councilmember Hawkins. Thank you. And Dernoga. And Watson. Thank you.
This stands introduced. CB seventy-five, an act concerning housing and property standards, moderately priced housing program for the purpose of.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. There was an amendment number one, a corrected draft two.
This is on CB seventy-three?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to go over amendment one?
Yes, can I? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize for not being quick enough there. CB seventy-three, twenty twenty-five, has one amendment. It provides for council authority over shuttle bus service, and it basically says, as part of approving a permit, if the property owner does not allow bus service, when the county council adopts a permit resolution, the council can mandate that the applicant provide shuttle service to the nearest metro station, and that's the amendment, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to move amendment one?
Some move.
Second.
It's a move by the vice chair, second by Councilmember Dernoga. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Mr. Dernoga.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Are all the sponsors the same? Seeing no objection, this stands introduced.
Draft three, yes, sir.
Draft three. CB seventy-five, twenty twenty-five, an act concerning housing and property standards for moderately priced housing program for the purpose of establishing a voluntary moderately priced dwelling unit program, identifying developments eligible to participate in the program, requiring the minimum delivery of moderately based price units, providing for a binding agreement between the participants and the county, providing for alternative methods to comply with unit delivery requirements setting forth development incentive programs. Participation specifying the eligibility requirements for households seeking to purchase moderately priced dwelling units, establishing the limitations on sale and resale moderately priced units, providing for the administrative regulations governing the program, requiring the annual reporting of the program and generally related to housing development in Prince George's County. This is being sponsored by Councilmember Orietta. I'll turn to Ms. Hightower for a brief report.
The PHED committee met on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to consider CB seventy-five, twenty twenty-five. The bill creates a program to encourage developers to set aside affordable single, uh, family use, uh, units for purchase. Uh, Director Butler, uh, with DHCD testified in support of the legislation with amendments and explained uh, the need for resources to start and run the program effectively. The PHED committee voted five zero in favor of CB seventy-five with an amendment to include, uh, non-substantive amendments discussed in the planning department's comments on the bill. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any additional sponsors on CB seventy-five, draft two? Councilmembers Watson. Adam Stafford and Burrows. This stands introduced. CB eighty-one, an act concerning Prince George's County Animal Welfare Advisory Committee for the purpose of creating Prince George's County Animal Welfare Advisory Committee, providing for the powers and duties of the committee, providing for the committee composition, terms and offices, officers, providing for meetings, providing for the committee's advice and annual report, and generally regarding animal welfare in the county. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Watson. I'll turn to, um, Councilmember Olson or Mr. Battle for a brief committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the TIEE committee convened on October ninth, twenty twenty-five to discuss CB eighty-one, twenty twenty-five, which establishes a new Prince George's County Animal Welfare Advisory Committee to promote and enhance the welfare of animals and serve as a link between the animal welfare community and local government. The advisory committee consists of nine members appointed by the county executive and confirmed by the county council. Advisory committee members will serve three-year terms, must meet at least six times annually and provide an annual report by July one of each year. After discussion, the committee voted favorably on CB eighty-one, twenty twenty-five, as amended by vote of five zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors, Councilmembers Burrows, Orietta, Dernoga, Hawkins, Olson, and Adam Stafford. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This stands introduced. CB eighty-four, twenty twenty-five, an act concerning senior protections and door-to-door solicitation for the purpose of amending the requirements for licensing, bonding, and operational conduct of door-to-door solicitors, establishing definitions for high-risk industries and seniors, requiring criminal background checks and mandatory consumer protections and elder fraud awareness training for certain applicants, increasing bond amounts for high-risk industries, requesting senior customer rights disclosures, creating a no solicitation registry, and prohibiting solicitation from registered properties, establishing a solicitation protection rapid response force to investigate violations and conduct public outreach, and providing for penalties, including specific protections for seniors and restrictions on repeat offenders. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Orietta. I'll turn to Ms. Ubank for a brief report.
Thank you. The Health, Human Services and Public Safety Committee met on October the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to consider CB eighty-four, twenty twenty-five, draft two. CB eighty-four, twenty twenty-five strengthens protections for door-to-door sales for seniors. Ramon Gonzalez, Legislative Attorney, provided an overview of the changes in the proposed draft two. The proposed amendments includes clarifying definitions and name usage, removing certain penalties, and reassigning responsibilities among agencies. High-risk industry applicants will now undergo a criminal background check and fingerprinting with costs covered by the applicant. Several references to divisions and QR codes were removed, and provisions regarding the notice solicitation registry and associated penalties were removed. Council Vice Chair Orietta, the bill sponsor added additional amendments. And after discussion, the Health, Human Services and Public Safety Committee voted five zero in favor of CB eighty-four, twenty twenty-five, draft two as amended, and we do have a draft three.
Briefly, draft three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are two amendments to, uh, the draft two. You can find them on page eight, line twenty-two. You'll see the strike through of Department of Family Services to now say Director, which is DPI in the situation. Amendment number two is page eight, line twenty-four, the strike through of the Department of Family Services and the insertion of Director DPI. Those are the two amendments for this bill.
Are there any additional sponsors for CB eighty-four, twenty twenty-five? Will this be draft three now? Draft three?
That is correct.
Okay, additional sponsors, Councilmembers Watson, Burrows, Adam Stafford, Hawkins, Olson.
Also, Madam Clerk, can I get on eighty-one?
Yes, sir. You will make the note. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm just, just for clarification. So, I know, uh, Mr. Gonzalez just talked about the amendments. Is that something that needs to be voted on now to make it a draft three, or was that captured and committed?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so you have to vote on.
Like to move amendment one?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Burrows, Watson, okay. Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Mr. Dernoga.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. CB eighty-eight, oh, this stands introduced. CB eighty-eight, an act concerning locally owned and operated business incentive act for the purpose of stimulating growth for locally owned and operated businesses by reducing the stifling burden of fees and charges on such businesses, thus fostering economic growth in Prince George's County. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins. I'll turn to Councilmember Watson for a committee report. And Hi, Leila.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee convened on October ninth, twenty twenty-five to consider CB eighty-eight, twenty twenty-five, an act concerning the locally owned and operated business incentive act for the purpose of stimulating the growth of locally owned and operated business by reducing the stifling burden of fees and charges on such businesses, thus fostering economic growth in Prince George's County. During the meeting, council staff provided an overview of the legislation, which would increase the number of locally owned and operated businesses by reducing the fees and charges. After a motion from Council Vice Chair Orietta and a second from Committee Vice Chair Bougay, the committee, the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee voted favorably five zero. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other sponsors?
Additional sponsors, Councilmembers Watson, Orietta. Thank you.
This stands introduced.
And Dernoga, I'm pardon me, and Dernoga, Mr. Chair.
And Dernoga. CB eighty-nine, an act concerning year-round job program for underserved youth for the purpose of establishing an employment program for low-income youth and young adults throughout the calendar year to improve socioeconomic outcomes for low-income and youth and families in Prince George's County. This is sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins. Orion, a brief report.
Thank you, Chair Burrows, and good afternoon, committee, uh, council members. The Education Workers Development Committee convened on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to consider CB eighty-nine, twenty twenty-five. The legislation, sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins, was introduced and referred to the EWD Committee on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The bill will establish a year-round program for underserved. The bill will establish a year-round program for underserved youth and young adults in the county to be administered by the Director of the Office of Human Resources Management. There was a draft two of the legislation to include the county's intent to request one million dollars in funding from the Maryland General Assembly to support the program. The bill also encourages other nonprofits and private entities to donate to the non-lapsing fund.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional sponsors? Councilmembers Watson and Burrows. Yes. And Oriada. This stands introduce. And Olson. This stands introduce. CB forty-nine. Sorry, CB ninety-four, and I read numbers out of order, twenty twenty-four, an act concerning the amending the collective bargaining agreement for Prince George's County Correctional Officers Association, PGCOA, correctional officers for the purpose of amending the labor agreement by between Prince George's County Correctional Officers Association, and to add provision to increase the shift differential amounts under Article twenty-six, paragraph A, that was omitted from the collective bargaining agreement previously approved as CB fifty-nine, twenty twenty-four. I'll turn to Ms. Eubanks for a brief report.
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole convened on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, to consider CB ninety-four, twenty twenty-five, which was proposed by the Chair at the County Executive's request. The bill amends the labor agreement between Prince George's County, Maryland, and the Prince George Correctional Officer Association. Companion legislation, CR one twelve, twenty twenty-five, includes the amended associated salary plan. The provisions in the collective bargaining agreement increases the shift differential from three dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to three twenty-five in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, was omitted from the agreement and enacted through CB fifty-nine, twenty twenty-five. CB ninety-four, twenty twenty-five ensures that the intended shift differential increases are properly reflected in the collective bargaining plan. The Committee of the Whole voted favorably nine zero on CB ninety-four, twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional sponsors?
Sponsors, Councilmembers Danoga, Watson, Olson, Oriada, and Hawkins.
Thank you very much. This stands introduce. CB ninety-six, twenty twenty-five, an act concerning returning citizen employment opportunities act of twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of reducing recidivism and improving public safety by requiring that a certain percentage of work hours on certain public procurement projects be worked by returning citizens, subject to certain conditions generally relating to the employment of returning citizens. This is being sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins. I'll turn to Mr. Tutt for the Committee of the Whole report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CB ninety-six, twenty twenty-five, was addressed on October, excuse me, October fourteenth by the County Council sitting as the Committee of the Whole. Council staff described the bill's purpose as reducing recidivism and improving public safety by requiring that a certain percentage of the work hours on certain public procurement projects be worked by returning citizens, subject to certain conditions. Returning citizens would receive a minimum number of hours on any new construction or public works, roadway maintenance, or property maintenance contract or procurement, or otherwise administered by any county agency or...
I made a mistake. This one's been held. CR one oh five, twenty twenty-five, resolution concerning compensation and benefits correctional officials' salary schedule, CO schedule, of pay grades for the purpose of amending the salary plan of the county to reflect wage and benefits modifications to Department of Corrections officials. This is being sponsored by... Okay.
We should be on a motion to accept the additions package number two.
Yes, okay. Which one is it? CB seventy, have we located draft two?
Yes, we dealt with that. That was submitted to you at three fifty-four PM, and so we went past that one, sir.
Okay, so that one stands introduce.
Yes. It's this additions package number two. We need a motion to accept that.
Is there a motion to accept additions package number two? It's been moved by Councilmember Oriada, seconded by Councilmember Olson to accept additions package. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Is that CB eighty-nine?
Just accepting additions package number two.
I don't see it on our email.
It's not been transmitted electronically. I did hand you a hard copy. Each council member should have a hard copy of that and a hard copy of the CB one hundred amendments that we've already completed. We've completed those, but we can bring you another copy, Mr. Danoga.
Okay. There's been a motion by Council Vice Chair Oriada, seconded by Councilmember Olson to accept the additions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Danoga?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins? He votes aye from the gallery. Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriada? Ms. Watson?
I vote aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much. CB eighty-seven, an act concerning National Board of Certified Teachers Incentive Program for the purpose of establishing an enhanced incentive program to encourage National Board of Certified Teachers to teach at low-performing schools in Prince George's County. This is being sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins. Are there any additional sponsors? This is CB eighty-seven.
We will need a Committee of the Whole report. CB eighty-seven, Ariane Alber.
Twenty seconds. We're gonna lose form, so really, just, we all know what it is, we just did it.
Right.
Thank you, Chair Burrows. CB eighty-seven was heard in the Committee of the Whole today, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and... I apologize, I'm not sure what the vote was.
All right, are there any additional sponsors? Oriada, Burrows, Watson. This stands introduce. CB eighty-nine, an act concerning supplementary appropriations for the purpose of declaring transfer appropriations within the general fund to provide for costs that were not anticipated or included in the approved fiscal year FY twenty-six. I'll now turn to... This passed out of Committee of the Whole, five to zero. Are there any additional sponsors? Watson, Burrows, Oriada, Hawkins. This stands introduce.
I don't know what number we're on.
CB ninety-nine, an act concerning Critical Housing Assistance Program for the purpose of establishing Critical Workforce Housing Assistance Program within the Housing Investment Trust Fund, providing eligibility standards for participation in the program, providing for the assistance to be offered in the program, providing for the application and approval process for program assistance, and generally regarding the Housing Investment Trust Fund. Mr. Tutt, do you have a brief report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prince George's County Council sitting as the Committee of the Whole addressed CB ninety-nine, which is an act concerning Critical Worker Housing Assistance Program. This bill would add a new Critical Housing Assistance Program within the Housing Investment Trust Fund to provide home-buying assistance to teachers, public safety workers in the county in the form of zero-interest loans or interest-deferred loans. The program would provide an additional recruitment and retention tool for hard-to-fill positions and help ensure that workers are able to purchase homes in the communities that they serve.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional sponsors?
Sponsors, Councilmembers Watson, Oriada, and Hawkins, and Olson.
This stands introduce. CB one hundred, an act concerning enhancements of county procurement practices for the purpose of amending subtitle ten A regarding administrative procedures, award of contracts, prohibited types of contracts, economic development, and generally relating to procurement subject to ten A. I'll turn to Mr. Tutt for the amendment. You can just turn your mic.
Oops, I'm sorry. CB one hundred, an act concerning enhancement of county procurement practices. The bill amends provisions of subtitle ten A. It's a comprehensive overhaul of the procurement law, and the resolution, excuse me, the bill was passed nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any addition? Say it again?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, it's an amendment to this legislation. It should be in your packets.
Our copy was provided to all members.
Is there a motion to move amendment one?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Hawkins and Olson, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Pardon me. Mr. Danoga?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins? Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriada?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors, Councilmember Watson. Thank you.
This stands introduce. CB one oh one, an act concerning Home Ownership Equity Program for the purpose of establishing home ownership equity program for county residents, providing for the purposes of uses of a home equity program within the Housing Investment Trust Fund, providing for the funding and administration of home ownership equity program, providing for the eligibility terms, funding, property requirements for buyers, providing for loans for persons in select groups, providing for the application intake, underwriting, closing support, post-purchase follow-up, and approval of administrative rules and program guidelines generally regarding home ownership equity program. This is being sponsored by Councilmember Oriada. Mr. Tutt, a brief overview?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prince George's County Council sitting as the Committee Whole considered CB one oh one, twenty twenty-five, an act concerning home ownership equity programs. This bill establishes the home ownership equity program for county residents. After discussion, the Prince George's County Council voted favorably with amendments nine to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional sponsors? Burrows, Hawkins, Watson. This stands introduced.
And this, the draft two.
And this is draft two. CB one oh two, an act concerning sick leave legal proceedings for the purpose of providing for certain mandated paid sick leave for county employee or employee family members at legal proceedings, providing for certain definitions, providing for verification of sick leave, and generally regarding county personnel law and legal proceedings. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Blague. Mr. Tutt, for a brief overview?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prince George's County Council sitting as the Committee of the Whole on this date considered CB one oh two, an act concerning sick leave legal proceedings. This bill provides for mandated paid sick leave for a county employee or employee's family member at certain legal, judicial, administrative, and immigration proceedings, allowing for the employee or the employee's family member to prepare for and participate in the proceedings.
Thank you.
After discussion, the Prince George's County Council sitting as the Committee of the Whole voted favorably nine to zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have lost form, which is why I've been trying to speed us up this time, so we will... Can someone go find the council member? We're almost done. I'll just keep speeding people up so that we don't permanently lose form, then all these bills are not introduced.
We can save time by skipping the bills of the council members who are absent.
Right. I mean, that's... Wouldn't I agree with that? Wouldn't I agree with that? All right. Okay, don't worry. We're gonna move very fast. Are there any additional sponsors? Where are we?
CR one oh two, on the additions.
Oriada. This stands introduce.
And Danoga?
And Danoga.
And Hawkins?
And Hawkins and Watson.
Thank you.
We're gonna move very quickly, because I understand where we are. CB one oh three, an act concerning real property for declaring certain parcels of county-owned property as surplus and no longer needed for county use. This is being, I assume, sponsored by the Chair at the request of the County Executive. Are there any additional sponsors? CB one oh three.
This one oh three, they report out of committee today. Sponsors, Councilmembers Hawkins, Danoga, and Watson.
Yes, passed out of committee unanimously. That's the report. CB one oh four, an act concerning enforcement and referral to the Board of Ethics for the purpose of requiring mandatory review by the Prince George's County Board of Ethics for any person found in violation of Prince George's County Code subtitle two, section two, division forty-six, community inclusiveness. This was being sponsored by Councilmember Fisher. If another council member can take it on, Councilmember Watson will take it on. It passed out of...
Mr. Chair.
Committee of the Whole unanimously.
I know we're in a hurry, but we hurried through this. I was looking for this bill earlier. I don't know what it does, and...
Okay, can we get an overview of what the bill does?
Yeah, I'm wondering what ethical issue is gonna be referred.
Okay.
No, it's the other bill.
Right, this is not the bill with your name on it, Councilmember Danoga, but...
It might be, that's what I wanna find out.
Okay, Mr. Tutt, for a brief report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prince George's County Council sitting as the Committee of the Whole considered CB one oh four, an act concerning enforcement and referral to the Board of Ethics for the purpose of requiring a mandatory review by the Prince George's County Board of Ethics for any person found in violation of Prince George's County Code subtitle two, section two, division forty-six, community inclusiveness. This legislation would clarify that employees and staff of Prince George's County Government, PGCPs, and county employees will not engage with ICE in social media for county purposes or in any other means. Also, it will confirm our engagement, excuse me, our encouragement that ICE is barred from accessing residents' information and that all county, within all county agencies and institutions. And the vote was favorable nine to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Doesn't really seem like an ethics bill, but it is what it is. Are there any additional sponsors?
Additional sponsors, Councilmembers Watson, Oriada, Hawkins. Thank you.
Stands introduce. CB one oh one, an act concerning home ownership equity program for the purpose of establishing home ownership equity program... All right, we've already done that. CB one oh seven, an act concerning county personnel for the purpose of clarifying the county's personnel policy regarding progressive discipline, revising the grounds for employee dismissal, providing for the immediate dismissal for low-performing employees, and generally regarding county personnel law. This is being sponsored by Councilmember Oriada. It passed out of committee unanimously, that's the report. Are there any additional sponsors?
No additional sponsors.
Stands introduce.
Do you? Now she said.
Okay. CR one oh five. A resolution concerning compensation and benefits correction officials' salary schedule CO, schedule pay grades for the purpose of amending the salary plan of the county to reflect wage benefit modifications of the Department of Corrections. Sponsors are Watson, Harrison, Blague, Ivy, Danoga, Fisher. Ms. Eubanks?
Thank you. The Health, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee convened on October the sixteenth to consider CR one oh five. It amends salary schedule CO for Department of Corrections officials effective July one, twenty twenty-five, through June third, twenty twenty-six. The salary plan amendments includes cost of living adjustments, and it also includes merit increases. And the Health, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee voted favorably five zero on CR one oh five, twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt, oh, second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Olson, seconded by Councilmember Watson to adopt. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Danoga?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins? We are on...
CB one oh six.
One oh five.
I'm sorry.
Compensation for Department of Corrections officials. Thank you. Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriada?
I, but I thought I was on this one.
We can add you. Okay? And Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
CR one oh six, twenty twenty-five, resolution concerning compensation and benefits police officials' salary schedule PO, schedule pay grades for the purpose of amending the salary plan of the county to reflect wage benefit modifications of police officials. Sponsors are Watson, Blague, Ivy, Danoga, Fisher, Oriada, Burrows. Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Eubanks?
Thank you. The Health, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee met on October 16 to consider CR 106, 2025. The salary plan amendment includes cost-of-living adjustments, affected the first full pay in April of 2025 and in April of 2026, with a regular merit increase for both years and a shift in differential. The Health, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee voted favorably 5-0 on CR 106, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
It's been moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Olson to adopt. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Danoga?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orieta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. CR 112, A Resolution Concerning Compensation and Benefits Sheriff's Official's Salary Schedule, SO, Schedule of Pay Grades, for the Purpose of Amending the Salary Plan of the county to Reflect Wages and Benefits Modifications of the Sheriff's Office. This is being sponsored by Watson, Olson, Blague, Orieta, Fisher, Danoga, Ivy, Hawkins, Adam Stafford, and Burrows. Ms. Eubanks?
Thank you. The Health, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee met on October 16, 2025 to consider CR 112, 2025. The resolution amends the salary schedule for sheriff's officials effective July 2024 through June 30, 2026. The legislation is necessary to implement adjustments to the wages and benefits of captains and majors within the sheriff department. The salary plan amendment includes cost-of-living adjustments as well as merit increases. The Health, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee voted favorably 4-0 on CR 112, 2025. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
It's been moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Hawkins to adopt. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Danoga?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orieta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
It's been moved by Councilmember Vice Chair Orieta, seconded by Councilmember Watson to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. I just want to say, on behalf of the council, thank each and every one of you for being here this late. I want to thank all the colleagues who stuck it out. There's food in the back. You're welcome to it, as long as supplies last.